Roll call, please.
I believe you should do. It seems that the clerk hasn't joined yet.
She actually, her wifi just went down. I'm sorry. And so she's trying to get back on.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because she was logged in.
Yeah, she was. She just dropped off.
Technology these days, that happened.
It is what it is.
Ben, you could wave if everybody can see you in the background.
Hi, Ben.
Hi, how are you, Millie?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Bad, not bad.
I love all this togetherness.
I love it. I'm not really looking forward to going back.
I am. This is live on Facebook, just so you know.
Yeah, it's still live.
Tom, can you do the roll call vote?
I was, I was thinking that. Yeah, I believe I remember everybody's names. It probably won't be in alphabetical order or anything, but how about Ms. Cardello?
Here.
Ms. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Murray?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Here.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes, sir.
Mr. La Monica?
Yeah.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Panerisi? Mr. Abusés? I've got seven members present. We have a quorum. Begin with the pledge of allegiance. We find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, if I'm, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The city has suffered a great loss, and I would like a moment of silence. Prior to mowing our heads, I have a few words I'd like to say about Captain Rick Bastieri.
Please go ahead.
Captain Rick Bastieri was appointed and sworn in to the, as a patrolman, to the Everett Police Department in October of 1983. He quickly rose to the rank of sergeant by February of 1986. Rick was then promoted to lieutenant in 1989 and made captain as of October 1994. He also, in 1997, had served for a while as the acting chief. Rick sadly leaves behind his wife, Michelle Bastieri, who most of us do know. She is also an Everett police officer. And his children, Rick Junior, Carly, and his twin boys, who are both serving, Nick and Joseph Bastieri, also on the Everett Police Department. Rick will be remembered by, and missed by, his family, fellow officers, friends, and those of us that he dedicated 37 years of his life to protecting in the city of Everett. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Cardello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to say that.
Roman numeral number three, reading of the records.
Wave that two.
A second.
A motion made and seconded to where the reading except is written, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oohs, ayes, ahs. We don't have to, I don't think we have to do a roll call vote on that, do we?
No.
Okay. Roman numeral four, public comment, that's. Yeah, we're gonna wait on that. Roman numeral number five, reporter Superintendent, Superintendent Tahiliyani.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It must be noted that there are no new items, no items under new business this evening. I'm going to begin with item number one, which is an update on the services and supports being provided to EPS students and families during our school closure. So despite the fact that it was not the news that we were wanting to hear, we were not surprised by Governor Baker's announcement that all schools in the Commonwealth would remain closed through the end of the school year. We did send out a robocall to all families that same day relaying the news in our major language that all schools would remain closed. Again, however, it's just our buildings that remain closed. The learning will continue. So we pivoted and mobilized our efforts to continue our services and supports and students, for students in several different ways. The first being technology. So this past week, last week, we made Chromebook deliveries to the families that were previously postponed as a result of the suspension of in-person services. So to prepare, central admin made about 450 phone calls to confirm the delivery dates and times. Although many families no longer needed a delivery, as many had picked up a Chromebook during the Tech2Go program, we made close to 500 deliveries last week. We reposted the online delivery request form last week as well, so that families who had not yet scheduled Chromebook deliveries could do so. That form is still on our Everett website. So currently, parents can make requests for new Chromebooks or replacement ones or replacement chargers in the case that they have any issues with their. Sorry. They can. Can you hear me? They can do that all online. So in terms of delivery requests for this week, we have received 425 requests thus far to deliver this coming week. We'll also be sending out a robocall in the next few days to ensure that all families who need a Chromebook will receive one. And we're continuing to connect with various internet providers to explore ways in which the district can support, ensuring that all EPS students have internet equality. So we will make sure, most likely be requesting an approval for this type of expenditures at the next school committee meeting to ensure that all of our students have that access. We've also leveraged the Chromebook delivery bags to include flyers translated into Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole on the importance of completing the census, and that include the link for using their Chromebook to go ahead and complete the census online. As far as the remote learning, we continue to have our weekly enrichment calendars posted on the website. We also are providing updated printed learning packets at our Meals2Go distribution for any families who are unable to access the materials online. Schools are consistently meeting with the teachers and reaching out to students and families. So for students that we are not seeing the level of participation that we would like to seek, schools are currently generating a list of those students, and we are providing targeted outreach in order to make sure that those students and those families have everything that they need. Maybe not even necessarily specifically for their academics, but if we haven't heard from the family, we do just want to make sure that they are completely taken care of and that they don't need anything else. We continue the meal distribution. Now it is on Tuesdays and Fridays from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., still at the Whittier and at the high school. For last week, we distributed approximately 3,729 breakfasts and lunches at both locations. And so that brings us to date of 29,000 meals distributed. And for families that cannot get to the Whittier or the high school, we are, continue to collaborate with the city of Everett so that parents can call 311 and request meals to be delivered. So notifications also went out to parents last week on end-of-year grading. So rightfully, we have been getting several questions from parents on how we are preparing for the end of school year in light of the governor's decision to close all schools. So we generated guidance on our approach to grades for students by various grade bands denoted by third quarter, fourth quarter, and final grades. This information was compiled into a flyer that was translated into our major languages and can be found on the main EPS website. And thanks to Mrs. Lambert's suggestion, we will also be including a QR code for all upcoming parent notifications such as flyers and posters, so that family. Sorry, my microphone keeps going in and out. We've also distributed grading information to all EPS teachers. A webinar was sent last week, walking them through what we're looking at as far as third and fourth term grades, as well as pertinent information such as guidance, policy, so detailed ones as well. Notifications to parent on end-of-year planning also went out at the end of last week, because not only are the grades extremely important to our students and families, but there are several other events and supports needed to the end of the school year. So to address some of the concerns we have heard from students and parents, we generated an end-of-year planning document that outlined some of the decisions that have been made, along with matters that we are carefully considering. So for example, we have been collecting scholarship applications at the high school during the Meals2Go program, so students can drop off their documentation. Additionally, in order to retrieve student belongings, schools will be offering families the ability to schedule appointments to arrive at their school with a priority for students to retrieve medications. While there was a day to do that right after school let out, now that we are closed for an extended period of time, there are families who need to get medications through the rest of the school year. We are also requesting that families schedule these appointments in an effort to avoid large crowds and gatherings at the school. So we will be doing that by appointment. And although some decisions really rely on how the COVID situation progresses with, with the guide, and with the guidance from Massachusetts Secondary and Elementary Education, we wanted to assure students and families that we are considering plans for other important end-of-year activities, such as graduation and also opportunities for summer learning. So we will be releasing that information as it becomes finalized. And finally, even though our central admin staff are working remotely, they are answering the phone calls, phone calls Monday through Friday, eight to four, so we're ready to support our students and families who may need support. So I'm gonna stop in case anybody has any questions before I begin item number two.
Ms. Sarni?
Thank you. Ms. Priya, have we found out that any students do not have internet? And how are we helping them if they don't have internet?
Yes, we do have several students who do not have internet. And so that will probably be the request that we're putting in next school committee meeting. All students do receive two months free. However, you know, even that can be a process to get. So the family does still have to sign up and then would get charged afterwards. So what we've been doing is working directly with the. Sorry, trying to ensure that it's, the access is as easy as possible. However, we do also have an opportunity to pay a minimal amount that we negotiated with the provider to be able to provide internet service for six months for our students at a nominal cost. So what we're doing right now is we're compiling the number of students that we believe that will, that will apply to, and getting those numbers to you for the next school committee meeting. So we can see if that is an investment that we want to make. We do think that especially with the opportunities for remote learning that may be coming up in the summer, that it would be a good investment to make sure that our students have access, not just now, but also through the end, through the rest of the summer.
Is it through Comcast? Is that who we're looking? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cardello?
Mr. Chairman, Priya, a question along the lines of graduation and end-of-year festivities. What about the, we've spoken about this before, scholarships?
Yes, so except for graduation, most of our award ceremonies, our scholarship ceremonies, even our, you know, our senior athletic banquets will be happening virtually. So we will, on trying to stream those. For our graduation, however, we are going a slightly different route, where we want to make sure that we are doing something where the students can, can get together, be together, even when they're socially distancing. So we're exploring several different options, including a drive-through graduation or a drive-up graduation, like a drive-in graduation, sort of like a movie theater. That seems to be the one that's most popular at this point. So families would come in their cars and would be able to come to a parking lot that has ample space. We would have screens where we're projecting the speakers, so that we could still have our student speakers. And so what we're working on right now is, is the logistics of that, because I think that's the idea that's most in favor of our, for our students. One thing I will say, however, is that whatever it is that we do for graduation is simply a placeholder, because we are committed to making sure they have a real ceremony when we can do that. But we think that it's really important that we recognize this time for them now, because we do know that we'll have several students who, you know, will leave and, and may not come back for a postponed graduation ceremony. So we think it's important to do both. So we'll do this one now. And then we will, once it's safe for all of us to be together again, we do commit to making sure that they not only have a graduation, but that they also have a prom.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrows?
Thank you. Superintendent, those students who want to request Chromebook, they can do so by calling their school as well, right?
Yes, so they can either go onto the website and do it that way, or they can call the main line between eight and four, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Superintendent, Madam Superintendent, what about the waiting? One of the questions has been the waiting for AP and honors classes, and how that will impact whether it be valedictorian or next year. Will that be determined by the high school or?
Yes, and we're actually looking at a model right now, because it will be based on, you know, their grades and their, they are going to be doing an A pass incomplete or intervention for the fourth quarter. So we're using first, second, and third quarter as their calculus, and towards their calculation for their GPA. I know that we do have students, those, you know, valedictorian, salutatorian positions are very sought after, and I believe that it ends up being, you know, hundredths of a point. So one of the things that we are considering, not just right now, but in general, is maybe doing a co-salutatorian model. And so what we're looking at this year is how, once we have put in those grades, how the GPAs end up panning out, and whether there is a way that we could recognize more students. I know that there are some districts too that do sort of like a top five students and recognize them. So I do think that there are, you know, different options that we have in order to make sure that we're recognizing our students, who I know are fighting for like a hundredth of a point to get that spot.
Ms. Murray?
Can you please, Madam Superintendent, speak a little bit more about the process parents should go through and how long they may have to wait to get medication back if medications are locked in the schools?
Yes, so our nurses do have access to the school buildings. In fact, now we actually have several of our school buildings where our nurses are, instead of being at City Hall making the phone calls they've been making to families, they will be doing that out of our school buildings. So all, now that we've resumed in-person services, principals and nurses who aren't already regularly in their buildings, all they need to do is just make sure to inform me so that I can make sure custodial services is also aware, and they can get into their building as soon as possible. They will be making them, they'll, most likely if they coordinate with their principal, they will make a scheduled appointment, again, to make sure that we are keeping social distancing rules. So the nurse will be. For them to, to come in and pick up their medication.
Mr. Parker?
Well, sorry, mate, I just want to be marked as present at a long commute to my office.
Is there a lot of traffic, Mr. Parker?
In the hallway, it's got stuck to the end of the dog.
Yeah, well, well, welcome. We, we missed you.
Yeah.
That was it? That was, oh, so, right. Do you have a note? I mean, like, come on, all right. Anyone else? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
All right.
Next thing.
So then I'll move on to number two, which is the notification of school registration in the Parent Information Center. So registration for students does normally begin May 1st, and it did actually go up May 1st as planned. It just looks different. So now we have the pre-registration form online. That form can be completed by families there. And then what we'll be doing, it's actually the same form they would have completed at the Parent Information Center. We've just put it online. And then what we'll be doing is contacting the families so that once City Hall does open again, we will be scheduling appointments for them to come in and bring their documentation. So it also on the website has a list of the documents they need to provide, to provide proof of residence. And so we'll be having them come in to, to do that as soon as we can. And they do receive a confirmation, letting them know, and I've been in touch with some parents who've already filled out the form, to make sure that they're, they're getting their, their form in and, and know that we've, we've been seeing it and that they will be all set. Number.
Questions?
Oh, sorry.
We're good, okay. Thank you.
Number three is relative to an update on the Student Opportunity Act and, by the Everett Teachers Association. I actually request permission to move this agenda item to the next meeting on May 18.
Move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to move item number three to our, May 18 meeting, Mr. Parker?
On the motion, Madam Superintendent, the report that was due began the Student Opportunity Act, May 8?
May 15.
May 15, now, okay.
Yes.
Position to respond?
So we are expecting that there could be another extension. So sorry, my microphone keeps going out. So we are wondering if that will be. If we'll be hearing of that soon. We're also getting notifications just overall about the Student Opportunity Act and the funds and, you know, making sure that they would be available. Either way, however, we are poised to go ahead and turn in that plan. There was a plan that was originally drafted, you know, before I even entered. And so what we'll be doing this upcoming week is because we are, you know, trying to look at the overall landscape, that money might be spent slightly differently in order to make sure that we are keeping the personnel that we need for next year. So I can provide you more information on that before that gets submitted.
Do we, if it's due the 15th and it doesn't change, do we have to vote to approve that?
Yes, we will need to call a special meeting.
Okay, great. That's it, thank you.
All right, so motion made and seconded to move item number three to our next meeting, next regular meeting, May 14. Roll call vote, I guess.
May, May 18.
May 18.
Why did I say 14? May 18.
Because it's my birthday, so that's why you remember, Mr. Chairman.
That must be it. All right. Yeah. Is Lauren here? No?
Yes, I am.
All right, Lauren, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Panerisi? Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abusés?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, zero negative, motion passes.
And finally, I respectfully ask the committee to vote on and approve permission for the chairman to sign an amendment to our futures contract. We did, because we, you know, after schools closed, we did have a little bit of a lapse in the time as we were getting ourselves together for a remote learning. So once Futures was back up and running, they did request to work through our April vacation in order to support the planning, or the planning to support our students. So we did ask them to go ahead and work through that April vacation. Actually, still, this amendment shows that they're working overall less days than what we had originally planned. So this does not mean that we are going above the original amount that we had allotted for our future. About the fact that, you know, it's change in what that contract looked like and when we were getting the services that we had originally contracted. And so we did want to memorialize that with futures, which is why we created an amendment to the contract. But again, we are actually, it's not going above the, the previous contract price.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we just clarify for the viewers what the futures contract entails and the services they provide our students?
Absolutely. So our Futures Education Program provides services such as our speech and language pathologists, our speech assistants, our occupational therapists, physical therapists, and other itinerant services to our students who may be on IEPs or also who, who could even be on 504s as well. So they provide those direct services. So after we were closed, we did need to regroup to figure out how they would be able to provide those remote services and if that would even be allowed, because actually, they did have to go through different trainings in order to make sure that they were licensed to provide those services remotely. So they all did go through the training, made sure that they were fully qualified and licensed to do that and to provide those services. And we really appreciate them working really hard to, to do that for us, and so they could then go ahead and start reaching out to students and providing those services. And we actually appreciated them being willing to work over the April vacation in order to make up for lost time.
Thank you so much. I move to support the amendment to the futures contract.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Basically for me, to allow permission for me to sign the amendment to the futures contract. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abusés?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, zero negative, motion passes. Roman numeral six, item submitted by school committee members. Number one, amend the rules of the Everett School Committee, Mr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to move favorable action.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded for favorable action. This is, number one is in regards to the amend the rules to delete when a regular meeting falls on a holiday. Committee vote to determine an alternate, alternative date at the preceding meeting. When a regular meeting falls upon a Monday during vacation, meeting may be postponed and held on the following Monday. And then add, when said regular meeting falls on a legal holiday, regular meeting of the school committee shall instead be held 6:30 on the Tuesday following such holiday. Motion made and seconded for favorable action on this amendment to the rules of the Everett School Committee. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Abusés?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, no, zero negative, motion passes. Item number two, to elect an official voting delegate for the 2020 Annual MASC Conference. Mr. Parker?
Mr. Chairman, so every year, the MASC has a conference down the Cape. It happens in November, and we, as a body, need to elect both the official voting delegate and an alternate voting delegate. And part of that is to participate on the annual business meeting that's gonna be held on Friday, November 6. And as of today, it's still on. Of course, that could change, maybe the format might change. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to a nomination to elect an official voting delegate for the conference.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Barrows?
Mr. Chairman, I move to nominate Mr. Parker, as he's been working with the MASC, even before the superintendent search, and knows them well. He used to work closely with our good friend, Mr. Ilan, on that. So if Mr. Parker won't mind, I move to nominate him to continue the work.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded to nominate Mr. Parker to be the official voting delegate at the annual MASC conference. Any other nominations? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Ms. La Monica?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
Ms. Arnie?
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Appazey?
Mr. Parker, eight votes for Mr. Parker. You've been elected the voting delegate. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Cardello.
We also need an alternative, and I would like to nominate Marconi Barrows as the alternative delegate.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to elect Mr. Barrows as the alternate, alternate voting delegate. Any other nominations?
Will the nominations be closed?
Motion made and seconded, nominations be closed. All those in favor, roll call vote, please. I don't think we did this the first time.
Mr. Barrows?
I guess, yes. Thank you, Ms. Cardello.
You're welcome. Yes, Mr. Marconi Barrows.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes, Mr. Barrows.
Ms. La Monica?
Yes, Mr. Barrows.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, Mr. Barrows.
Ms. Arnie?
Mr. Barrows.
Mr. Parker?
Mr. Barrows.
Mr. Appazey?
Mr. Barrows, eight votes for Mr. Barrows. Mr. Barrows, congratulations, you are now the alternate voting delegate.
Mr. Chairman on the item?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
So I will notify the MASC of the results of tonight by filling out their form and sending it to them to let them know that me and Barrows might be heading down the Cape.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Parker. Item four, to invite Kathleen Kelly, MASC field director, to present the MASC policy subscription service to the regular meeting of May 18, 2020.
Mr. Chairman on the motion?
Mr. Parker.
Want to move for favorable action?
I second.
Motion made and seconded to invite Ms. Kelly to present the MASC policy subscription service to us at the our next regularly scheduled meeting. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Appazey?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, zero negative, motion passes. Roman numeral seven, subcommittee reports, I don't see any. None. Bills and payrolls, unfinished business, new biz, we have no new business, no hearings, no matters for executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker.
If we can go back to item, Roman numeral number eight, bills and payrolls?
Yes.
We do have an action item to to vote on.
Please, please go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $222,024.87.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve bills and payrolls in the amount of $222,024.87. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert? Ms. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Appazey?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $222,024.87. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Appazey?
Yes, eight in the affirmative, motion passes. Anybody going to move?
And no other items, so?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Ms. Cardello?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes, with the thank you to all of our teachers for teacher appreciation week.
Ms. La Monica?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes, and a ditto to what Ms. Lambert said, and to any of my colleagues in the city.
Ms. Arnie?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Appazey?
Yes. Question, do they ever have lawyer appreciation week?
Who appreciates lawyers?
Yeah, I didn't think so. Well, that's, I gotta, I gotta contact the governor and move for that to be like some sort of a holiday. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, least we forget, May 6th is actually National Appreciation for Nurses' Day.
That's right.
So we definitely want to remember our healthcare workers.
Absolutely.
Along those lines, along those lines, just, I mean, Alan, Alan is not here, but Alan certainly is, is, you know, my thoughts are with Alan, I'm sure everybody's thoughts are with Alan. I mean, he is really from, you know, you didn't have to read that article or paper to realize that Alan is really on the front line and.
I drew here.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alan.
But so in terms of motion on adjournment, eight in the affirmative, motion passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, stay safe.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, folks.
Good night, folks.